I'll order the meeting, the Greenwood Common Council on Wednesday, February the 21st. This evening, we have a group of scouts with us that are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. So if they want to come forward after the pledge, if you please remain standing, will be led in prayer this evening by Joanna Morris, Chaplain Agreement Care for Southern Care Hospice.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you so grateful for those who teach our young people to grow up to be good citizens and those who honor authority and honor you. And we also come so aware of all the division and tumult in our work. We ask, Father, that you would give to us the ability to create peace and dignity in the realms that we can control and where we can control ourselves. We thank you for this wonderful council in Greenwood that honors you by offering the opportunity for us to begin in prayer. We pray, Father, this night, as they meet together, that there would be listening to one another and good respect in decisions made. Thank you, Father, for the opportunity to be, to bring peace in our corner and may it spread all throughout the world. Thank you, Father, for Jesus' sake we pray.
Thank you, may be seated. This time I will ask the scouts if you'll go to the microphones and give us your name, what troop you're with and what you're working on. We appreciate that. And I'm going to ask you to use the microphone so the people online can hear you as well.
Everett and I'm in PAC 264, working on citizenship of community.
My name is Ethan Williams. I am also in PAC 264 and I'm working on the citizenship and the community merit badge.
My name is Gorman Septon. I'm in PAC 264 and I'm working on the community citizenship merit badge.
I'm Lynn Tye Ryder and I'm with PAC 264 and I am also working on the, the community and citizenship merit badge.
My name is Ethan Smith. I'm also in PAC 264 and I'm in the citizenship, I'm in the citizenship community merit badge.
My name is Ethan Smith. I'm with Troop 2640. I'm working on my Star Race and I'm with, I'm working on citizenship community merit badge.
Jackson Laster, I'm from Troop 265 and I'm working on citizenship community merit badge.
I'm Charles Royal, Troop 263 and I'm working on the community.
I'm Charlie. I'm from Troop 263 and I'm working on citizenship for the community merit badge.
I'm Lilian. I'm with Troop 263 and I will be working on communications merit badge.
My name is Ezra Wyatt, Troop 263 and I'm working on citizenship and community merit badge.
I'm Connor Tanning with Troop 263, working on citizenship community merit badge.
Thank you. We appreciate you all being here tonight and hope that you enjoy what you see take place. And afterwards, if you have any questions, feel free to ask any of us. We'd be happy to answer your questions. All right, roll call.
Here, Campbell.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Gil.
Popper.
Here.
Lexie.
Here.
And Shep. Here.
Um. Here.
And Wood.
Here. We have a court. While we should have received copies of our minutes from the last regular meeting of February the 5th. Do you have a motion? Motion. Motion for Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second to Mr. Williams. Any additions, deletions or corrections? There are none, then roll call in the minutes.
Petros. I. Campbell.
I.
Gibson.
I.
Gil. Popper.
I.
Lexie.
I.
And Shep.
I.
Um.
I.
And Wood.
I. Minutes are approved with a vote of nine to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
We have none, sir.
Are they going to control it this time?
Nothing for me.
At this time, we do have Cheryl Dobbs from the Greenwood Public Library here and so, Cheryl, who is yours?
Good evening. I have a presentation which I hope will show up soon. Cheryl Brown, Greenwood Public Library, I'm the Executive Director. And here just give you an update of what's going on at the library. There it is. It's coming. You can your packets. If you let me go through what's in your packets, I do have tonight's presentation for you because I'm not going to read all the fine print because you don't want me to talk for two hours and I could. But also in that packet, something I think you'll find useful is this card. This tells you all the kinds of library cards you can have and use by libraries. It's one of the weird things with our district that just like the school district, we don't serve all of Greenwood. We serve a district, a paxi district of Greenwood. And so you may get questions about that. This will be something that's handy to let them know what services they're eligible for and what it would cost if they're out of our district. If they're in Johnson County, we have a reciprocal agreement with Johnson County Public Libraries and there's no cost. You just need to have a card with your home library that you can use any library in Johnson County. So that's a great addition that we did about eight years ago. You also have a reading tracker. This is one of the things in the swag bag that goes to all new apartment dwellers in Greenwood. So Think for Madison or some of the other new places that have come up, they all get a bag of goodies from us at the library so they'll come and get a card. And this is just to track your books that you're reading for the year. It's just a fun item. Our 2023 Annual Report is a quick one-page report and I'm going to go over some of that tonight. And then our newsletter is in there as well. I encourage you to read all of that. With me tonight, I have our Trustee President Lori Feller. Lori has been with us from her fourth term. So trustees can serve four, four-year terms. She's appointed by the Greenwood School Superintendent. And she is the head of US payroll at Eli Lilly. So I lean on her a lot because she's voice smart. Joshua Jackson, that you will appoint for our board, was out of town for business tonight, so he could not come. But he sends his regards. So let's get started. It's our 106th year in 2023. We are now 107 years old. And if you've been over to the library, you'll know that we don't book it. Thanks to you. So 2023 is really a pivot year for us. We finished our five-year strategic plan. We're starting a new three-year strategic plan. So in 2023, we did all the stuff. We've all done this kind of thing. We did the surveys. We got input from our community. And we created a new plan going forward, which says that we're going to move forward in the same direction. We're creating readers in Greenwood. That's our priority. And we saw in those surveys, a ton of responses for the first time ever that people are reading more because of what we do. This is, these are new responses. We had 1,100 responses, tons of comments about reading. So we're really excited about that. So I'm not going to read all of these. I want you to read them. That's why I'm in your packet. So that, again, I will pop some up that way. But this year, not only did we finish that strategic plan strong, but we finished our endless construction project. We had a one-year project that became a three-year project. And when I say it's complete, you'll know that I mean, not really. Mostly complete. But it's less than that. We got through COVID and our numbers went down like everybody. And then our door count in '22 actually equaled 2019 for the first time. So it started to come back up. All of our statistics started to come back up. And with the completion of construction and the completion of that strategic plan, it has gone through the roof. So we're very busy right now. But all the numbers on this screen, my favorite number is this call this one. Because you'll read that libraries are having less books checked out. Not true. We continue to see increase in print circulation. Now, we have eBooks and we have a digital collection and those go great. And people love those too. But print books are still being used by your community and we're really pleased to see that, children especially. So we've been focused on literacy for all the time I've been a director. That's our main goal, to create readers in Greenwood. If we believe that it changes a child's life, an adult's life and a senior's life. Getting them ready for school, getting them ready to be a good employee or keeping their mind active. So this year, we invested in a new early literacy ambassador. This is Fable the Box. I really did consider bringing him with me and having him stand right here, but I thought it might give mixed reviews. So I'm, I'm not saying he'll never come, but I did bring him this time. So we need Fable, his own Fable's Den. And this is an early literacy learning area. We opened it just about a month ago, two months ago, and it has just taken off. So we're really pleased to provide engaging spaces for kids to learn about reading. This year, we also moved the bar on new library cards by having a cooperation with our Greenwood City Schools. And every new child that goes to that school gets a library card. So because of that and other efforts that we've done with new residents like at the Madison, we had a 42% increase in new cards issued. So we're really excited to see that, that move. That's a hard one because when people don't use the library, they just don't use the library, like they don't think of it. But we hear them when they come into, to vote at voting time and they're like, oh, I always wondered what was in this life in this building. This is really cool. So our goal is to get you in the building so you can see what we have and then we can encourage reading. We have created a runway for students, businesses and content creators in our community. So we added study rooms. We now have 11 study rooms. We had seven before and they were always full. So we added more of those. We tried to do what we saw people needing in our community. Our study area workspaces have added a lot of cool. So there's a lot of neat places to come and do work and study. And those are popular. They fill up in the morning and people are there doing work. Our studio, our recording studio is a part of our maker space. But that recording studio has been here for five years. And thanks to a grant from our Library Foundation, we were able to update it this year. And what you see there is the, the front part is the video recording area and the back is for podcasts. Plug and play, everything you need, the cameras, the equipment, everything you need to do those things. We have classes in them as well. And you can't see it because of that thingy, but there's a local podcast that contacted us. We didn't know they were using our, our recording studio, but it's called Final Word. And one of them lives in Greenwood and the other guy lives in Indianapolis. So they meet and do all of their episodes in our recording studio. So again, we're serving everybody from readers to content creators and everybody. We also work to bring people together in our program. So some of the better programs that we did are, that are unique, I guess you could say. Pub Trivia. Have any of you been to Pub Trivia? You're not in fence anyway. Pub Trivia is on Tuesday nights at Trujer Brewing. Our Assistant Director Emily Ellis is the master of trivia and runs that. We also had two library after dark events that were little fundraisers for our foundation where adults can come play at the library when their kids are at home with babysitter. And they, they were very popular. Sold out. Adult game nights are really pretty common with us. Hello Neighbor is something new this year. We were saying to ourselves, you know, we really don't know our old town neighbors. We wish we did. They're like, well, let's invite them in for coffee. How about that? And so we do that monthly. And old town business owners, business people come in and be with us and it's just their time to meet each other and to talk. We also have an artist in residence that happens twice a year, April and September, where we bring artists in to teach their classes and their art to the public. We made some new spaces out of our building. The GPL Living Room is a reaction to the last five years of seeing families come in for social services in our building. So they might have a, they might have supervised visitation, my brain looked like. We might have supervised visitation. That's been happening in our building for about five years. And we see a family like sitting in the corner with some pizza and someone with a clipboard and we didn't know what was going on. And it just became more and more and more common. And these are our people in our community meeting with professionals. So we created the GPL Living Room so they have space to have the business part of that meeting privately. And then they can go play in the children's department for the other two hours of a four-hour weekly appointment. The great thing about that is that once these people have come in and been at the library four hours a week, we often see their families restored and they are now checking up folks incoming to see us on a regular basis. So people we wouldn't normally reach. So we're really pleased to be able to offer that. The GPL Boardroom moved. It used to be kind of in the back because you have boardrooms are like, we use it once a month. We might use it twice or three times per meeting. Now that is available. And companies like Modern Wooden come in, get out of the office and have training or use our digital meeting equipment so that they can just bond and have a different environment for the day. Twenty-four. So what's coming up in twenty-four? Obviously, we're going to have all of our regular programs, storytime, book clubs, all of that. We're also going to have an early literacy conference where parents and caregivers can learn from the experts and go home with everything they need to do an early literacy storytime with their kids or at their daycare or wherever they're involved with children. And another thing, if you have anybody in your family that has small kids or you know a preschool teacher or a early grades teacher, we have a Fables newsletter that's early literacy tips. Encourage them to sign up for that as well. The Readers Retreat, we're not going to say too much about because we still haven't finalized everything, but that's coming up. And that's going to be a weekend event involving old town businesses. And we're going to bring a couple of authors in and have some really fun times with them and do more of a retreat. The Maker in Residence will continue and be expanded to makers instead of just artists. So we have someone coming who does weaving and they make their own yarn. So that's our next one. That's coming out in April. Oddly, she's bringing a rabbit that she actually takes the fur from and makes the yarn. So all kinds of. And finally, I just wanted to say thank you to you for appointing one of our board members and to the mayor for appointing a board member. This is an important part of taxpayer oversight of what we do. It's really important that you know what we're doing and what we're accomplishing. I want to make sure that you have my number, that you can call me if you see stuff that you want to understand better about what I'm doing or what you're seeing in the news. Give me a call. Let's have a conversation. Also, thank you to Mayor Myers for his appointment of Shan Rutherford, to our board. Both Shan and Joshua were reappointed recently and they are both super important parts of our trustee board. A big thank you to Terry McLaughlin is Brian Haden there because they field all my questions. Like when I have a problem at the library or I don't know what's going on with subsidy project, I call them. And if Terry is listening online, he's probably rolling his eyes and saying, yeah, she helps me out. But I really appreciate having points of contact in the city to get those answers. A big thank you to the Greenwood Police Department. We've had not a lot, but just in the last three months, just happened to have some folks that really needed some compassionate care that we were unable to provide. And when we called for assistance, they came with a professional attitude with, you know, low expressed devotion, all those good things that you need to do when there's a crisis and they took care of it very, very well. And we appreciate being able to call them without fear that anything's going to go wrong. They're just so professional. They do a great job. And also just wear your library. So I'm going to be reaching out to each of you. And I know that a lot of you have day jobs and it's hard to get over to the library for a tour. But I'd really like you to come over and have a tour so that next time when I come, I won't try to stay so many.
Thank you. So any questions for Cheryl?
So in your packets is the Eclipse magnet. See that? That Eclipse magnet is something we're going to be selling for $5. Get it free tonight. These are awesome. And then we're going to sell it for $5 for our foundation. So that is made on our glow board. So if you come to our maker space, you're going to see the equipment you have which can make things like that. So if your business or the city or anybody needs to make something, we have that equipment. The Madison has made a ton of stuff for their new residents. So anyway, I really did.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Y'all should have received a copy of my report from the last RDC meeting. If you have any questions, let me know. Any other committee or board reports? All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So if there's something on tonight's agenda you'd like to speak to us about, now is your chance. So please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing that and moving on, ordinances and resolutions. Notice of intent to consider ordinance number 24-031.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by our work and unify development ordinance number 2029. Propose rezoning approximately 11.5 acres of land located on the east side of State Road 35, approximately 600 feet south of Denali Grove, sponsored by Lexi.
Do you have a motion? Motion for Mr. Lexi, second. Second to Ms. Gibson. Someone here wish to speak about this?
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Brian Toohey. My address is 50 South Grady. Here with me tonight is Doug Fowler from Columbus, Ohio, Eastwood Home City Development. Thank you for hearing our case. I will give a brief presentation if that's the council's desire.
Yes, please.
Thank you. This is a interesting zoning case. It's kind of on infill site on State Road 135. It's eleven and a half acres. It's owned by David Derringer, Greg Allen and Charles Wilson. Mr. Derringer is actually here tonight. And we have filed a request to rezonate from RL to RMC to allow for a development of a Class A multifamily apartment community on that site on the eleven and a half acres. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this, I've heard to it as an infill site. As you can see, it's kind of an unusual site. It's only 400 feet wide, but it's about 1,300 feet long. And it's fronts on State Road 135. Next door to the south is the Independence Village Senior Living. And then there's another senior living community just to the south and east of the site. So on the south side of the site, it's ordered by two, three and four-story senior living communities. And then directly east of the site is Copper Chase Apartments. To the west is State Road 135, a day dice walk. Of course, then to the north is a pretty wide range area, I think they call it a ranch area. And then to the north of that is single-family homes and then Damari Road. So it's surrounded by single-family, by independent living, senior living facilities and Copper Chase Apartments and then State Road 135. Next slide, please. There's the site looking from the State Road 135 looking east. You can see Independence Village off there to the right and the new senior living development in the further background. There is a photograph looking just straight south of the site. That's Independent Village. And then the new four-story development to the east of that. When you look at zoning, one of the things you do, of course, is look at what's the zoning around it. It's a sort of a smattering of zones. You have CM on the south in that area from that exhibit. You have RL on the north and then you have the zoning category that we are respectfully asking approval for, which is RMC. That's the kind of brown khaki colored area along the east and south sides of the site. So kind of a multitude of zonings around the site. We presented a plan to the plant commission of 192 units in eight buildings. And we had three stories up in the northeast corner where that green box is. And during the plant commission meeting, some of our neighbors in the single-family homes to the north asked Mr. Fowler if he would consider reducing those buildings to two stories, which he agreed to do. And that's part of the commitment that any buildings on the northeast corner against our residential neighbors would be only two stories in height. He's actually tweaked his plan a little bit so that it might only be one building up in the northeast corner. And again, it would be limited to two stories in height. This would be the, the tweaked plan that I just referred to, that building up in the northeast corner, which is the far right top of that exhibit shows that it's a three-story building and then they, I'm sorry, two-story building. And they moved the three-story buildings to the south so that they would border against Independence Village and the other newer senior living facility, which is a four-story. This, these are high-quality residential community. The Homestead Company members of the council has about 2,000 residences under construction. They're in Columbus, Ohio. They're in Fort Wayne, Indiana. They just closed on a parcel in Indianapolis on Emerson. They expect these apartments to rent for between $1,300 to $2,000 a month. Their desired tenants and their likely residents of the community would be young professional couples. They don't need to stay many children. There's only one bedroom and two-bedroom apartments available. If there's any wrong with children, I've got four of them. Fine. But I just, this is not, that's the day. This is not a shot against a few children. This is not the residents they expect to have. This would have exterior stone masonry and hardy plank siding. There would be no vinyl siding. You can see some of these renderings. Has taller ceilings, nine to 10 feet high. There'd be washer dryer hookups in the apartments. There would be carports and garages available. There would be higher-end appliances, higher-end cabinets and countertops. A fitness center and a community building, which is right there in front with a high-end pool. That would be about 3,700 to 4,000 square feet. So again, it is a sort of a rather expensive, higher-end apartment community on an infill site. These photographs of a similar recreation, so they call it, I might call it. Here's the outdoor rendering, outside rendering of the building. You can see the hardy plank and stone siding. And just give the feel for what the community would look like. This would be a three-story building, as I mentioned. A height, two-story buildings against our neighbors. We have a, we appreciated working with staff very closely and over a long period of time. They generally agreed with our statement in support of the rezoning. They found that the, this use would be compatible in the area. They mentioned that the mixture of uses alongside 135 ranges from single-family to multifamily to commercial. And the use of this parcel by residential would fit the character of the area as staff wrote in their report. Additionally, staff indicated that the zoning is compatible with adjacent multifamily uses. Remember, we have our senior living right next door and our Copper Chase right to east of us. They found that the, that the pine, that the request would not negatively affect the values. And they thought this was considered responsible development and growth for this site. We had a number of commitments that the staff asked us to agree to, that we could do a traffic study. We've actually already ordered that. That's in process. That there would be an access easement across our property to connect to the south, the Park Road Drive. That the developers would be in compliance with your United Development, United Unified Development Ordinance as amended. And that any infrastructure improvements would be performed in accordance with technical review heading. Then at the plant commission, we added three additional commitments. One was to lower the northeast buildings from three stories to two stories. Then, and that we would provide a Flock security camera on-site at our expense. And then lastly, we would provide one apartment at a 50% rental rate to a Greenwood police officer. Those were suggested by a member of the common council and Mr. Fowler's team. Those were suggested by a member of the common council and Mr. Taylor's team. Summary, uh, we would respectfully suggest that this multifamily use is compatible with the adjacent multifamily, proper adjacent, the senior living uses. It's, it's an infill site. It's, as I said, it's kind of unusual because it's not, it's rather narrow, but rather deep. This site does not generate much tax revenue for the Greenwood community. This will vastly increase the tax base on that site. Really use high quality exterior materials in the construction. We had a neighborhood meeting before we actually filed the case in August to discuss what we were going to do. We had the library actually to work that great, it's a perfect facility. And then we sent sixty notices out in January with my commission hearing. We believe we've agreed to all staff's requested commission, conditions and commitments. And planning staff, uh, which we very appreciate, made a favorable recommendation. And in our plant commission hearing, we had favorable recommendation of all you have spoke. We'll certainly try and answer any questions you might have, and we thank you very much for your consideration of our petition.
Any questions for Mr. Tui?
I know last time when we discussed this, there was a concern brought forth by Dice Walk and Ashley Community both because of the, what they're concerned about is flooding. Have there been any mitigations to think about how that might affect this area?
So we hired Kimberly Horn, uh, who's a local engineer. They've assured us that with our onsite contention, they actually believe we will improve the drainage flow off of this site and not adversely affect Dice Walk or the subdivision to the north of Denary Road, which also raised some concerns about that. And then after our plant commission hearing, I spoke to a gentleman who was the president of that, uh, homeowners association. And, uh, we're going to put him in touch with our engineers as we get into the calculations and figuring out the. So we're, we're very aware of that.
Any other questions?
Did you make contact with the Center of Schools regarding this? I know you mentioned that. The thought is that it wouldn't be a high children residency. But, and I know in previous meetings, the Center of Schools kind of said, we kind of looked at developing all of the area. Well, certainly when we get our final unit count, we will do that because that came up in another case we worked on for the Bowman property, they called it. And, uh, in fact, they're trying to build a school in front of that property. So we're certainly aware of that. I think that, as I say, that anticipation is there will be fair students, yeah, great school or high school.
But any other questions? Anyone from staff?
I said one. Mr. Y'all always do a great job and I appreciate that. I know you won't have the final on this project, I promised that, but I don't see that's a commitment in here. So I'll probably make an amendment to put that in there just so we're clear.
We're fine on that.
No.
Well, I don't have much to add. You did a good job summarizing, um, staff's opinion of, of this rezone. I'd like to also mention that our plant commission didn't certify their favorable recommendation of eight to zero. One member was absent that day. That's why you don't have nine members. I think what is unique about this site is that it is a longer, smaller eleven acre parcel. Right now it's still residential large. I really don't think that that's what is the market is going to give us on this parcel. Uh, so that is part of our recommendation for this to be more of a mixed use, higher density product. One other thing unrelated to the case, I do want to also thank the library for hosting our comprehensive plan meeting on the twenty ninth. So we hope to see you there.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Hopper to add as a commitment, no vinyl. Do I have a second? Second, second by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on the amendment to ordinance twenty-four oh four? You're an end and roll call on the amendment.
Betron?
Aye.
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-four oh four is amended under vote of nine to zero. Any further discussion on the ordinance twenty-four oh four as amended? I will say that I like the fact they're going to have a Flock security camera and a police officer on site. If that's good.
We're not forcing them to let there.
Well, that's. At fifty percent, though, I guess somebody will take advantage of that. That'd be my guess, so, yes. So I think it's great. All right, any other discussion? Hearing and then roll call, ordinance twenty-four oh four as amended.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
And Betron?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-four oh four passes, as amended, passes on vote of nine to zero. First reading, ordinance twenty-four oh five.
An ordinance to amend Greenwood Municipal Code nineteen ninety-three as amended, chapter six, article ten, to allow code enforcement personnel to enforce regulations regarding student sidewalk instructions, tree inch trim trimming, and littering.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Williams. Any discussions? Hearing and then roll call, ordinance twenty-four oh five, first reading.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
And Campbell?
Aye. Ordinance twenty-four oh five passes, first reading nine zero. For our scouts here tonight, I tried to explain this. So far, we've had two ordinances. One was under notice of intent to consider. And that gets one vote, it comes before us, one time, it's one vote, and it's done. The rest, I mean, you just heard me say first reading. We'll have some that are second reading tonight. We'll have some that are introduction. Our normal rules are that a ordinance or a resolution is introduced one night. And then two weeks later at our next council meeting, there's a first reading and a vote. And then, even though we don't actually read them, but there's, it's called first reading and a vote. And then two weeks later, there's a second reading and a second vote. You'll probably see tonight at least one of these ordinances is going to have the rule suspended, at least a motion would be made. And in that case, we will do two votes in one night. But that's how the process works. Normally, most ordinances, resolutions, take three meetings and two votes. Okay? If you have, again, if you have any questions afterward, feel free to ask. All right, ordinance twenty-four oh six.
An ordinance to repeal Greenwood Municipal Code nineteen ninety-three as amended, chapter six, article five, rates and temporary street closure sponsored by Hopper.
Have a motion, motion Mr. Hopper, second. Second, Ms. Gibson? I'm sorry, Ms. Manship? Excuse me. Any discussion, ordinance twenty-four oh six? Hearing and then roll call, ordinance twenty-four oh six, first reading.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
And Gibson?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-four oh six passes first reading nine zero. Ordinance twenty-four oh seven.
An ordinance amended Greenwood Municipal Code nineteen ninety-three, chapter eight, article four, section eight thirty-one, to allow the Board of Public Works and Safety to prohibit overnight parking on city streets and approve overnight parking in city-owned parking facilities sponsored by Hopper.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second. Second, Mr. Moan, any discussion? Hearing and then roll call, ordinance twenty-four oh seven, first reading.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
And Hill?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-four oh seven passes first reading nine zero. Ordinance twenty-four oh eight.
An ordinance providing for an additional appropriation in the Quirks Record for Integration Fund to Budget Classification four one one, four thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars in the city for a budget sponsored by Hill and Lexi.
Got a motion? Motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Williams. This is scheduled for a public hearing. For a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against ordinance twenty-four oh eight, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, close the public hearing. The scouts again. Uh, this is an additional appropriations, which means we, the council sets a budget and all money spent has to be, come out of that budget. Uh, this particular, additional appropriation is money that's not been approved in the budget. It is added to the budget so it can be spent. And so, and when we do that, we have to have a public hearing. As you saw, nobody spoke, but we still have to have one. And, uh, but that's what the public hearing is about because they're asking for extra money that was not budgeted. So, all right. Any discussion on the council? Hearing and then roll call, ordinance twenty-four oh eight, first reading.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
And Hopper?
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero.
This has been a listed, can you get yourself a reading and know how complete this needs to be done?
Is that necessary?
What is it?
Suspension?
No, we're good.
No, okay, thank you. Ordinance twenty-four oh nine.
An ordinance amending the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance, common council ordinance number twenty-three thirty-three, to increase waste management part-time hourly wage, to provide certification pay for certain positions in the Department of Community Development Services, to change the office manager pay in post conviction services, and to address changes and agree with fire department hiring process sponsored by Pet.
Have a motion.
Some move.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second.
Second.
Now, Mr. Lexi? Any discussion on the council? The fire chief is here, are there any questions? Seeing none, then roll call, ordinance twenty-four oh nine, first reading.
Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
And Lexi?
All right.
Ordinance twenty-four oh nine passes first reading nine zero.
Is this, Chief, is this one that we need to do second reading?
No, it's, it's a one way down.
Okay, thank you.
All right, second reading, resolution twenty-four oh one.
A resolution, amending resolution number twenty-one oh seven, a resolution declaring certain areas in the city agreeing with an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property permits for tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing, GLA properties LLC for building complex sponsored by Hopper.
So the motion, Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lexi, any discussion on the council? Hearing and then roll call, resolution twenty-four oh one, second reading.
Mo?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
And Manship?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four oh one passes second reading nine zero. Resolution twenty-four oh two.
A resolution approving certain amendments to the east side economic development area, Polte Del Webb Project sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Got a motion by Mr. Hopper, second. By Mr. Moan. Any discussion? Hearing and then roll call, resolution twenty-four oh two, second reading.
Williams?
Aye.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
And Mo?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four oh two passes second reading nine zero. Resolution twenty-four oh three.
A resolution approving certain amendments to the east side economic development area, Anderson Howser Unit Four Project sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Now, Mr. Moan, any discussion on the council? Hearing and then roll call, resolution twenty-four oh three, second reading.
Betron?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-four oh three passes second reading nine zero. New business, introduction of new ordinance as a resolution, resolution twenty-four oh five.
A resolution in the Greenwood Common Council to drop the written fiscal plan for the annexation of approximately eighty point nine acres located at the South West corner of East County Line Road and North Five Points Road, referencing annexation ordinance number twenty-four ten sponsored by Campbell.
Anyone here wish to speak to this?
Good evening, my name is Andrew Melzer. Address is twenty-five hundred Evans Trade Center Drive, Evans, Georgia, three oh eight oh nine. I lead development efforts for my group, Next Chapter Neighborhoods, um, which is the sponsor of her, the chair behind this application. I'm happy to give you the full presentation, the full information, or we can do a Q and A, whatever you would like.
We'll do the presentation.
Sounds good.
We got a question.
Not that much. All right. Perfect. Like I said, my name is Andrew Melzer. Uh, I lead all the development efforts for Next Chapter Neighborhoods, which is a developer of single family home communities that are for rent. And I'm standing in front of you this evening, very excited, because the project we're going to propose to you this evening is a very exciting. And I think was a need for it in the city of Greenwood, as well as the metro in the area, as well as the demand for it in the market that's proven that out. Before I get into the specific project, which I will go into quite a, quite a long depth, I'll just tell you a little bit about the form of requests that we're bringing to you, which is twofold. First is an annexation, and secondly is a zone map amendment, a zone map change to allow for the development of this project. If you guys aren't familiar with the property, it's in the east side of Greenwood at the intersection of County Line Road and Five Points Road at the southwest corner. I had control of this, but, uh, there we go. Again, about eighty acre piece of land that's kind of cut into a third by Drubbs Ditch there at the top side. Give your bearings. So firstly, on the annexation request, um, this property would need to be annexed into the city of Greenwood. And in short, I think it makes a lot of sense. Um, I reviewed the current comprehensive plan. I reviewed all of the, the readings of the study for the, the in progress comprehensive plan. I've seen the future land use maps. And everything has a consistent theme of calling for an expansion of pretty much the east. Now, while this would not be necessarily an expansion, uh, I would look at it more as a hole in the donut, so to speak. As you see there, it'd be filling in a little bit of a gap. Um, I think it makes logical sense. And, um, from a future land use perspective, there's been a few calls here for, for mixed use. It's commercial, it's residential, and you'll see that's precisely what we're proposing to you guys. So again, just to show you to fill it in here, I think the annexation makes a lot of sense to the city of Greenwood. Uh, on the zoning side, um, twofold. So on the north side of Drubbs Ditch, we'll be proposing small commercial, commercial, small zoning. And on the south side will be the residential area where we plan to develop our next chapter neighborhood. Um, when we first came in to do this project, our desire was to do the whole thing as a residential zoning. Because, you know, we wanted to do an ex-chapter neighborhood, that's what we wanted to do. But staff alerted, alerted us to the fact that all the future land use plans and the comprehensive plans called for this stretch to actually have some commercial on it. And upon consideration, I think that makes a lot of sense. I really do. Yeah, there's been a lot of apartments that have developed around here. The Polte Del Webb Development just to our south is going in. If we're successful, right across the street from us is a new, uh, a new residential building that popped up as well. We think it makes a lot of sense to have a commercial node on this side of the interstate and not having to shove everything on the other side of the program or Walmart. So we, we, we've heard staff, we, we agree with their, their concerns and their desires. And we've thus adjusted our request to have some commercial on the north side of that natural delineation of Drubbs Ditch. Again, and, you know, trying to look at it from a practical sense, that you're looking here at a picture of a site working south. So kind of flipping our orientation, County Line Road at the bottom of the screen, five points on the left. What we'll be proposing is commercial, small format, which is like a neighborhood commercial type zoning on the north side of Drubbs Ditch. And then our next chapter neighborhood, we're going south side, and that's a single family RA zoning. Another important consideration to look at was zoning, obviously use a zoning around it, uh, as, as we heard in the presentation before mine. What I've done here is overlay the zoning map so you can get a sense of what's going on in the area. And the short answer is it's a mix of zones, which is very good, actually, is what the land use plan. and the short answer is it's a mix of zones, which is very good, actually, and is what the land use plan calls for, and is exactly what we're going to be fitting into. You have RMC right next to us, up to thirty units per acre. You have some larger lot zonings, which should go up to five, almost five or six units per acre, based on your minimum, minimum lot size requirements. Then you also have some commercial that's already started to pop up along that stretch, which is good, because that's consistent with the future land use plan. So you see what we're proposing makes a lot of sense, it fits in with the surrounding zoning, and is very compatible with it. Again, we'd be seeking RA primarily, which is up to ten units per acre. But an important note I'd like to make is that we're not, we're not going to come anywhere near that, and there's a few reasons for that, which I'm going to go into, but we're going to be right around four and a half units per acre, which surprisingly to me is actually a lot less density than some of the large lot zonings, like, like I mentioned, they have to almost five point seven units per acre. So, in summary, it's compatible with the surrounding zoning, it's compatible with the current comprehensive plan that was adopted in two thousand and seven, it's compatible with the current ongoing comprehensive plan, as far as I can tell, the meetings I've watched and all the documents that have come out, maybe Gabe can attest to this. And it achieves Greenwood's stated vision of attempting to diversify employment and housing, which I'm going to speak on here in a second. So, that's the zoning request, that's the formal request, I think there's a lot of points there that are very compatible with Greenwood. If we're successful in our request, what are we going to build? We're going to be building a next chapter neighborhood. Well, what is that? In short, it's a neighborhood, an intentionally planned neighborhood, a thoughtfully planned neighborhood, full of individual homes, smaller, some people call them cottages, one bedroom up to four bedroom homes, all for rents, all for rent. What's the demand for that, you might ask, who lives in a next chapter neighborhood? Good question, primarily two types of people. First type of person, the industry has kind of coined this new term, called a renter by choice, a renter by choice. These are types of people, for whatever stage of life they're in or circumstance they're in, they have decided they are going to rent. They think that it is more advantageous for them, or convenient for them, that to be in a rental type environment. Some examples of this, retirees who are on a fixed income and want a fixed expense lifestyle, or maybe you want to move out of their homes, and they don't want to keep up with their four bedroom, two-story home anymore, they want to pay the rent every month to know everything's taken care of for them, which is exactly what we offer, exactly what we offer. We function and operate very much like a luxury apartment complex. Move into one of our homes, everything's taken care of for you. If your life old goes out, we come and change it, the fridge breaks, we replace it. We do the outside maintenance, we do the inside maintenance, pay your rent, and you don't have to worry about anything. The second type of person might be someone that I've called a prospective renter, which sounds kind of obvious, but it's someone who is in a situation to where they may not, they may not think renting is for them at the moment, because quite honestly, traditionally renting has been bisected into two categories, a four-story apartment, or you're renting to a landlord in a single-family house, and there hasn't been a lot in the middle. Both come with drawbacks, both come with advantages. The next chapter neighborhood fills that gap right in the middle. We bring you all the benefits of a high-end apartment complex with amenities and the convenience, but you also get your own four walls, you don't have a neighbor above you or a neighbor below you. Every home is detached here, and you have a sense of the neighborhood and a sense of the neighbors. We'll talk about more in a second. So the project will have two phases, the first phase will have two hundred and thirty-three homes, again, at full buildout, that'll be roughly four and a half units per acre. Individual, single-family homes, hence the single-family zoning. High-end amenities still, and other neighborhood features, which I'm going to show you. All the homes will conform with Greenwood's building design and non-manhattan standards, which I know has been an important consideration for a few of you. Rough total capital investment here, I know that's also probably on your mind, it's about sixty-five million dollars, and we're projecting an added tax base to the city upwards of seven hundred thousand dollars a year. Quite a significant number in both respects. Just going to flip through some pictures here for you, here's a project we have that's closest geographically to you in Fort Wayne, Indiana, which, when my colleague and I first attended a Greenwood City Council meeting, there was a similar type rental project on your agenda, and our project was actually referenced, we're talking about it, and so that was kind of cool for us to see, and we, you know, it boded well for how we were to go forward. So this is that project, this is Dupont Meadows in Fort Wayne, Indiana, I encourage you, Google it, look at it, come drive up and see it, we'd love to give you a tour, we're very proud of it. There are going to be a lot of things that are different from this project, which I'm going to show you, but I hope this gives you a flavor, and maybe a picture can be worth a thousand words for you here. Again, just a snapshot here is an example of one of our homes in Savannah, Georgia, the top left, I know very far away, some examples of the high-quality interiors. The bigger picture at the top left, to give you an example of the street skate, and then at the bottom right, again, just to give you a little flavor. You know, one question I get asked sometimes by council members is, "How do you look at that picture? Who would want to live so close to their neighbor? That looks awful." I understand that, right, that's, that's an understandable concern, but surprisingly, the people who live in next chapter neighborhoods, they want to be that close to their neighbor. They want to walk out on their front porch with a cup of coffee in the morning and see their neighbor next to them wave at them, see the guy from across the street walking their dog on the sidewalk. That's what they're looking for, and that's what they don't get in an apartment, if you think about it. If you, you build an apartment, park your car, you walk up the ladder stairs, go up the elevator, you're going to your little queue, it's very, very hard to establish a sense of community or a sense of neighborhood. That's what people want out of the next chapter neighborhood. So, it's a little different perspective, and one, not everyone gets fully, which I appreciate, but it, it just, you know, times have changed. Here are two example pictures, you know, we can flip back to our amenities on the right pool there. Um, just another quick snapshot here of who lived in the next chapter neighborhood, again, getting back to the renter by choice, this was actually an interesting exercise for me. I, I, I would not have guessed the national average twenty-two, twenty-two census for the median, median household income was seventy-four thousand dollars in the U.S. Wouldn't have guessed it, but it is. It's even more surprising, Greenwood is almost an exact snapshot of that. With Greenwood's that median income, they'd send me five thousand dollars a year. So that was kind of interesting, how you guys fit exactly to the median income there. People who live in next chapter neighborhoods, you see, have an average, a median, I should say, one hundred and six thousand dollars of household income. You can, you can pull a few things from that. Um, the primary thing I'd like to reemphasize, again, renters by choice, they have options. They are choosing to rent, for whatever reason, whatever stage of life that they're in. Who lives with us by age, so a diverse range of people, as you can imagine, a lot of retirees over fifty-five crowds, so over the age of fifty-eight represents sixteen percent, that main age bracket is thirty to fifty-seven, about forty-eight percent, the eighteen to twenty-nine age bracket, about twenty-three percent, and then finally underneath that, children, about thirteen percent. Before the meeting, I, there, there's a packet of three letters distributed to all the seats that were related to our project. One of those letters, as I bring up children, is a letter, a letter of acknowledgement from the, from the Clark Pleasant School District, I'd like you to take a look at that. Acknowledging and approving and accepting the amount of kids that this neighborhood will bring to the school district, and then stating publicly that they have the ability to accommodate those, and they have no, no concern about that whatsoever. Again, things that just separate a next chapter neighborhood out from your traditional rental options, a true sense of community, you know, our tagline here is building great neighbors, building great neighborhoods for great neighbors. Our founder drills into us almost every day, we adopt this built-in shelter here, we're building a place where people will live and they'll spend their lives. Here's what the site plan will look like, I'm almost done, I promise. Again, that RA zoning on the south side of Grubbs Ditch will, which will be where the next chapter neighborhood is, divided into two phases. I think it's zoning there, yeah. And divided into two phases, we're planning the first one, about two hundred and thirty-three homes, a similar arbitrary phase line drawn there at the bottom, leaving room for about sixty homes, if the market is very receptive to our use. The rents and the bedroom count, tabulated here at the top left. The averages, again, for those, for that phase one, two hundred and thirty-three units, about a thirteen hundred square foot home, which majority of them are one or two bedrooms, and the average rent's about nineteen hundred dollars. See though, ninety-six fifty-three, over half of the bedrooms are one or two bedrooms, and those rents are from fifteen hundred to two thousand. This is kind of blocking, but from a density standpoint, I've mentioned we're right at four and a half units per acre, which again, surprising to me, was actually right in line with some of these larger lot zoning classifications. And the zoom thing's blocking, it's not as impactful as it would have been. And, and, you know, with two hundred and thirty-three units, you know, those are homes, how many people will that bring? We found you can usually supply a one-point-five factor onto that, so you're probably looking at about three hundred and fifty people. Probably the most important number there are the children, about forty-five children, which again, is referenced in that letter of support from Clark Pleasant School District. We can come back to all of this if you have one. Three proposed driveways, with two proposed sub-outs there in the darker blue, talk about these if you'd like. We're going to have to do some road improvements, absolutely, on both roads. We're going to have to kick off a full traffic study, which is teed up and ready to go. We've already met extensively with staff, and Mark St. John, the city engineer, we're going to have to put in turn lanes, widening on County, on County Line Road and Five Points Road. There's a section there of Five Points Road, and we're going to have to dedicate rideaway on our property to allow for future road improvements, but that can't happen until the other side of the road, let's fall as well. Main thing this project is centered around are two parts, which I am absolutely ecstatic about. The first one there, we call the central part, is over four acres, over four acres, and the bottom one there is just over three. A lot of developers look at the site plan and say, "Well, getting zone RA, you can get ten units per acre, you're at four and a half, you know, it's a waste, it's an absolute waste, what are you doing?" We, well, we have the opposite. We think that people will want to live with us and deserve to live with us, and will pay the rents to live with us, if it's somewhere worth living. And to us, that means a highly amenitized space. Central part, four and a half acres with a walking trail, pickleball courts. Main clubhouse area, haven't even touched on that, with the pool, clubhouse, bocce ball court, it's like a resort you've seen in Seaside, Florida. Pickleball courts, playgrounds, a community garden, not my thing, but I've seen plenty of people using it, they throw tomatoes, all kinds of stuff in there, we have one in a project that, in order. And then finishing up here, that doesn't even count for the over two mile walking trails, over two mile walking trails, which when we totaled it up, kind of engulfed a little bit, I mean, that's a lot when you think about it. But it's important to us, and we've had success with it, even most recently in Fort Wayne. We, we have about ten extra acres on that property also that we, you know, wasted, and we left completely wooded and built, and built this beautiful walking and hiking trail through it, and our neighbors love it, they love it, we've had plenty of people come up to us and tell us that's why they live there, you know, for amenities like that, so it's important to us. And then the two, you know, public tour golf carts, of course. Oh, and we're going to be required as, as well with the road improvements on that county line to do, I think it's a ten-foot wide hike-like trail, to match up with the apartments that are being developed to play a lot there. Parking is, is always a concern for everyone, we're going to have plenty of it. Every, about ninety percent of the homes will have their own garage, so each home will have a parking space in the garage, parking space in their driveway, so two per home. But then, we built in over three hundred and eighty-six overflow spots, which are these parking pods, and we try to place strategically, where if you have friends over, or you host a party, or you just have an extra vehicle, you can't park it on the street, so we give you a place to park it in these overflow pods. I think I have a few pictures up, I can show you. But I think with the overflow spots alone, we were to exceed the parking requirement, but then when you throw in the two spaces per unit additional, an immense amount of parking. Home plans, this is the breakdown, we have a range of one, two, three, and a four-bedroom plan, and here's what you probably want to see what they're going to look like. So, what we've done elsewhere in the country is, on your screen there on the left, which I think is a good-looking plan, hardy board siding, picket fence up front, but we understand Greenwood has exceptional requirements, and so we're going to propose exceptional house plans for that. And here's an example of what we've done to update it for specifically Greenwood. A major morsary, a major, mortar masonry requirement, say that, that's, that's, is in place here, and we're going to meet it, and that's, I think in this case, path one or two, I believe, which requires a three-foot water table on the bottom, which we're doing with brick, and then of course, still a hardy board cementition siding to go with it. The non-manhattan standard is also important, so we don't want a bunch of homes with horizontal hardy board siding, that'll look odd, so we're going to change it up with some vertical board and battening as well. And again, we've already talked with staff a lot about this, and we're still going to have to, to position the homes on the plan, so that you never have two that are exactly like that to each other. Ideally, they're broken up by three, four, or five. So they're going to be broken up by masonry, the siding materials, and also the color. And I'll give you an example of that, what that looks like here. These are, these are just a variety of the plans, I'll flip through, again, one with four bedrooms, hopefully giving you an idea of the homes that we're proposing. And then wrapping up here, I wanted to include the final two slides, just again, putting the context of what's going on in the area. I'll go to this next one. Apartments are well underway next to us, if you guys have seen it. You know, hundreds of units going up as we speak with that RMC zoning. We're proposing again, the RA, single-family, ten units per acre, commercial on the north side of the ditch, which is compatible with the land use plan, and then just to our south, the Polte Development, over five hundred houses going in. They're going to have to improve their section of road, which, you know, they already started, we're going to have to do our section, and then we're going to have to do the top side as well. So there's a lot going on in this area, but the good thing is that it's all compatible with each other, there's a lot of synergy that exists. There's a, there's a list of commitments in the packet, I've just picked out four of the ones I thought you care about the most, and put them on here, but all, all the commitments that staff has proposed, we're in agreement with. We would even add an extra one, the fifty percent off for the police officer, which we've already agreed too long before this, but we talked to staff, we should make sure to say that out loud, so. We're excited, and any questions, please lay them up.
Alright, any questions? Alright, thank you very much. Alright, moving on, ordinance twenty-four ten.
An ordinance amending certain territory that contemplates to the city of Greenwood, Indiana, placing it within corporate boundaries and making a chart, the city agreed on the requirement, also boundaries of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, to include approximately eighty-four, ten acres, located south of East County Line Road and west of North Five Points Road, eighteen Miami Park LLC, property sponsored by Campbell. That is the companion annexation ordinance to the fiscal plan resolution that was just introduced.
So just to keep you updated on the staff report for the annexation, this is just going to be the fiscal report tonight. Staff report will be presented at plant commission after public hearing on the twenty-sixth. Following that public hearing, I'll be back here for another public hearing on March fourth, where I can go further into the staff report, plant commission representation, and answer questions about the site, about the development. Today, I'll just stick to the fiscal report. The fiscal report is required for annexations into the city of Greenwood, that's for, even for voluntary annexations like we have before us. A voluntary annexation has a pre-whoa bar, as far as the fiscal report's concerned, if you really can't, it's a speculative document that you can't necessarily use as, as real numbers, a lot of these are theoretical numbers. It could be annexed into the city, the project could change, the developer could change, et cetera, so I don't want you to put too much weight into the numbers you have here. But basically, what our financial report determines is that at the rate the city continuously grow, additional expenditures may become necessary and will become necessary. However, with the number of ongoing projects we have, and you're aware of them because they come before you, it would be difficult to connect any particular expense to this specific annexation. This would be very, a very limited number of expenses going to here. Few of our calculations showed about a one percent increase in city expenditures. I, I wouldn't even say that that is true, though. Really, this is just like an earlier subdivision coming into the city of Greenwood. Due to it filling in a gap, we are already serving out further than the proposed annexation. So there really is not too many concerns as far as the financial side of things.
Any questions, Mr. Melzer? Alright, moving on, ordinance twenty-four eleven.
An ordinance amending chapter two, Article Six, Section two thirty-eight of the Greenwood Municipal Code as amended, designating no parking on the east side of Wooddale Terrace between Meadow Drive and Harst Street, sponsored by Manchin.
Good evening, Mark St. John, city engineer. This ordinance tonight actually originally came in as a citizen request, myself and my staff, investigated it a little further, and we were clear supportive of restricting no parking on Wooddale Terrace. This is located west of US thirty-one and north of Meadow Drive. The pavement width out here is about twenty-two feet wide, there's a lot of on-street parking on both sides of the street, when people park on both sides, it becomes very difficult to get through. Initially, towards the south end of this road, there's a on-street permit to their ninety-degree parking, some driveways that pull straight in and out, and I think it's important there is strict parking across the street from those. So, happy to answer any questions you might have on this, but that, that was the basis of this.
So, um, happy to answer any questions you might have on this, but that that was the, the basis of this, this request.
Any questions, it's present? All right, thank you. Ordinance twenty-four twelve.
In ordinance amending the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance, common council ordinance number twenty-three thirty-three, to increase the salary range. For the probation officer one position in post-conviction service probation at Trump Court, sponsored by Harper.
Hi, uh, Drew Paulson, there at the Greenwood City Court, so what I'd like to do is uh, change the salary of the probation officer one slot we already have. Increase the pay for it, match that to the assistant chief probation officer, don't have an assistant chief probation officer, want to hire a second probation officer in. To help with the uh, the manpower for the department, however, paid probation officer is set by the state, the person who can found a several years' experience, so what probation officer one spot pays now. Fit it with the staff order that is required for us to pay them, advantage of hiring someone that experiences, already have all the certifications necessary to be a probation officer, so we wouldn't have to spend money on training them. I'm asking for suspension of rules, we can get them on board soon.
All right, so there's a request for suspension of rules tonight, uh, I have a motion to suspend rules in ordinance twenty-four twelve through first reading. Motion, Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second, I'm Miss Veteran, I, I get the feeling, second, I'm Miss Veteran, uh, any discussion on suspension? And then the roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading in ordinance twenty-four twelve.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bethany.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through first reading, they have a motion on first reading, so, motion, Mr. Hopper, second, by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on the ordinance twenty-four twelve? And then the roll call, ordinance twenty-four twelve, first reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bethany.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye. There were a motion for suspension through second reading. Motion, Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second, and Mr. Williams, any discussion on suspension? Just for the record, to do, the the motion for the second suspension requires unanimous vote, so, so everybody knows. Uh, roll call and suspension, ordinance of the rules through second reading in ordinance twenty-four twelve.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Mo.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bethany.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
And Gibson.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through second reading, they have a motion on second reading, motion, Mr. Hopper, second.
Thanks.
Second, Miss Veteran. Any uh, discussion on, uh, oh, sorry, uh. Yeah, we're on second reading, any discussion on ordinance twenty-four twelve? And then the roll call, ordinance twenty-four twelve, second reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Manship.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bethany.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
And Hill.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-four twelve passes second reading ninety. Thank you, Judge. All right, miscellaneous business, this is the second opportunity for, that we set aside for a public comment. If you're here tonight, I'd like to address the council, this time concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. Uh, please step forward to the podium, take your name and address for the record, and, and stated in the agenda, there is a five-minute time limit for speakers, so, anyone? Very done, then moving on, miscellaneous business from the council, we have two contracts that you all, uh, re-received in annual report. The Greenwood Community Band and the Johnson County Senior Services. I think the Community Band is a um. Uh, a total of five thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred from the council, twenty-five hundred from the mayor, they have a motion to approve the, the contract with the Community Band.
Sure.
Motion by Ms. Gibson.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Williams, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. And then Johnson County Senior Services, uh, believe their total amount is sixteen thousand. Again, eight thousand from the council, eight thousand from the mayor, have a motion to approve that? Some motion by Mr. Lexi, second. By Mr. Mo. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And then a passage, both of those passed.
I'm distraught that they did not come before us, so I could ask them about their need for more money for healthcare services for our seniors in Johnson County.
I did not require them to come before us personally last year.
I want to note, by displeasure.
All right.
Noted.
Noted. That makes you unhappy, that really is. All right, any other miscellaneous business from the council?
Just like said, Mr. President, I did take towards the library, and it was well worth it. So.
I haven't said it tonight, but I always say, it's the finest local municipal library that I've ever been to. And so I, I'm very happy, I was just there last night for a meeting, and uh, the facilities are great, the people are kind. I would recommend you to go there and and experience one of the finest libraries that you'll go to.
The only downside to our library is that it's not a Carnegie library, because Indiana has more Carnegie libraries than any other state in the country, and that would add a little bit of history.
Well.
So, yeah, that's the only bad thing I can say about it.
But, but we do have a great library, all right, anything else from the council? Anything from the Corporation Council?
Yes, sir.
From the controllers? From the mayor's office?
All right, sure.
Thank you, everyone.